All right. You're the best. Thank you. Okay, we can start because the chairman has his glasses. So first of all, welcome everybody to our Sutter County Board Meeting of June 24th, 2025. We're happy to have you all here. And we'll start with a roll call, please, by the clerk.
Supervisor Boone.
Present.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Stevens.
Here.
Okay, will everybody please rise? We'll start with an invocation from Lloyd Sutters from Crossroads Community Church. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance as led by our own Donna Johnson. Johnston, thank you. Thank you for the correction.
As Osama said, "This is the day the Lord hath made. We will rejoice and be glad in it." I'm thankful to be American, thankful for the land of the free. I want to share with you Billy Graham's Prayer for America. It's a short one. Our Father and our God, we praise you for your goodness to our nation, giving us blessings far beyond what we deserve. Yet we know not always right with America, yet we deeply need a moral and spiritual renewal to help us meet the many problems we face. Convict us of sin, help us to turn to you in repentance and faith, set our feet on your righteousness and peace. We pray today for our nation's leaders. Give them the wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. You have said blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. May this be a new era for America, that we humbly walk before you and acknowledge you alone as God supreme. Heavenly Father, for this time, it's a privilege to join with others. Thankful we have freedom of assembly, freedom of self-government, for health and strength today. Help us to be making good progress in this meeting. Thankful for civility and peace, be a presence in our lives, in our nation. We give you thanks. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lloyd. And please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Donna Johnston. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I guess except for the supervisors, we have to go up front for the presentations.
Exercise.
A little bit of exercise.
Will Bill Thompson with the Yuba City Moose Lodge, please join the board up front for a presentation of a plaque for your support of the Sutter County Employee Appreciation Picnic?
Okay, thank you for coming up. It's my honor to present this to you, the Yuba City Moose Lodge. This is June 2025. It's with heartfelt gratitude to the Yuba City Moose Lodge for your generous support and outstanding preparation of the food for the employee appreciation picnic. Your kindness and dedication made the day truly special. This is signed by the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, Dan Flores, Mike Ziegemeyer, Jeff Boone, Carm Baines, and Jeff Stevens. We want to really appreciate you for that. And please, let's give them a round of applause. That was an amazing day. Want to say a few words?
The Yuba City Moose, the Moose entirely, is all about community. It's about kids and seniors, and we're happy to do any kind of community service that makes the place better. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Another round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Did you get a picture? There you go. You got it. Let's get a better one. Yeah. Come on, this is the moose. We do it right. With the moose in the middle. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Will Donna Johnston please join the board up front for a presentation of a service award in honor of 35 years of service with Sutter County?
We have something special for you, Donna. You can hold that. Okay, 35 years, as you can imagine, it's going to take me a bit. Congratulations. Yeah. Yeah. Why don't we? Yeah. We'll have you, we'll have you guys up here when we do, when we, when we take the photo. Okay, ready? This is a resolution for Donna Johnston, Sutter County Clerk Recorder, Registrar of Voters, Clerk of the Board. Whereas the Sutter County Board of Supervisors proudly presents the gold resolution to Donna M. Johnston in recognition of her 35 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Sutter County. And whereas Donna M. Johnston first joined Sutter County on June 21st, 1990, as an accounting technician too in public works. From there, she promoted several times within the county and worked in various fields such as accounting, purchasing, behavioral health, and information technology. And whereas on June 8th, 2008, Donna was appointed as the County Clerk Recorder, Registrar of Voters, Clerk of the Board. And in June 2010, she was elected to the position and then reelected in 2014, 2018, and 202022. And, well, it says and, so another election coming up, I guess, maybe? Okay, okay. And whereas during her tenure, the Clerk Recorder's Office became the first in the nation to deliver electronically certified birth, marriage, and death records using blockchain technology. The office also digitized its records to make public access easier and significantly improved online services for Sutter County residents. And whereas Donna secured grant funding for technology that streamlined the voter experience, which has resulted in fewer provisional ballots issued since the 2020 election cycle. In 2025, the Elections Office received the Clearinghouse Award from the U.S. Elections Assistance Commission for its outstanding use of Help America Value, or Help America Vote Act funds to modernize elections. And whereas Donna is a Certified California State Registered Elections Official and holds an Auburn University Certified Elections Registration Administration credential and California State Association of Counties, County Senior Executive Credential, she also holds a Microsoft Office Certified Master Instructor credential and has taught Microsoft Office courses for the local junior colleges since the year 2000. And whereas Donna served as President of the County Recorders Association of California. You, there's going to be a test on this after. So, okay. From 2017 to 2019, President of the California Association of Clerks and Election Officials, that's the CA CEO, from 2020 to 2021, and President of the California Clerk and Board of Supervisors Association in 2022. And whereas Donna currently serves as the Regional Chair for the U.S. Elections Assistance Commission's Local Leadership Council. Wow. And as the Chair of the CRAC, Information Systems, and on the Advisory Councils of the CA CEO and the CRAC, and as one of the California State Delegates for the International Association of Government Officials. Holy cow. Great job. Okay. Whereas Donna Johnston's unwavering dedication and compassion have made and continue to make a lasting and meaningful impact on Sutter County and its community. Okay, this is where I have to get serious. I can't joke. So now therefore be it resolved that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations to Donna M. Johnston for her 35 years of service to Sutter County and causes the names of each of its members to be affixed to this gold resolution as evidence of the Board's individual and collective appreciation for her years of service to Sutter County, passed and adopted this 24th day of June, 2025. Congratulations, Donna. I don't, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a whole lot I can add to that. I've had the honor of serving with Donna since 2014, and it's been amazing. You heard all the recognitions and the various things that she's done throughout the land, I should say. But, but you know, what she's done for Sutter County has been so highly impactful. I mean, just the improvements that have made and the quality, that people look to Sutter County now as leaders in the field that Donna serves under. And, and you can see, I mean, she's drawn upon by so many different organizations for her leadership skills and being able to provide those to so many other organizations as well. So we look for your continued service. And like I said, and is coming up next, next year, so, and we thank you for your service. But we do have a couple more presentations, and then we'd like to hear from you as well, okay? So if I could call, oh, here, here are my friends. Who's first? Okay, this is, everybody together? Okay. Okay, all right, I'm going to have you introduce yourselves because I don't want to mess anything up.
I am Tasha Weaver. I'm with Senator Megan Dally's office. And then we have Isabella Morgan here. She's with Assembly Member James Gallagher's office. I'll let David speak on his behalf, but we are here today to honor you and to thank you so much for all the service, everything that you've done for the Sutter County community. And it sounds like without you, they might not have been able to make things happen. Or it might have just taken a little bit longer to make it happen. So we just want to say thank you so much. I'd rather not read because ours is very lengthy as well. But it is our resolution, a joint resolution on behalf of, I'll get out of here, the Senator and the Assembly Member, thanking you and congratulating you for 35 years of service. Thank you so much.
And then David Morgan with Congressman LaMalfa's office. It's my honor and privilege to present you with a certificate recognizing your 35-year career here with the Sutter County and all the multiple roles that you've played here at the county. And you've continued to be a bright light in every single one, working to give our citizens and residents the best customer policy that they can possibly earn. So thank you for continuing to do that, and we look forward to many more years of service. Congratulations.
You want to hold the big one in the center, and then we'll, we'll hold these two on the sides? And then we have the photo? And we can, I can, can you hold this, Supervisor? There we go. You need an entourage to carry you. Oh, hey, we need the, we need you guys up here. Come on up. Mike, Mike. Come on up. That would be great. We love hearing it. Okay, and there's a few words from Donna.
Thank you, all of, all of you for all of this. It's just, it's one of those things, I just, I feel very fortunate to work for Sutter County. My mother worked for Sutter County. She's the one who said, "Come work for Sutter County." As we all know, moms know best. But I couldn't have done it without the support of my husband, Mike, for all these years and putting up for all of the hours that it takes to do all of those things that you just listed. But I couldn't do it without a wonderful staff. I have fantastic staff. I love all of them. They do a great job. Mike, like I said, I couldn't do it without my family, couldn't do it without all of the support of the other department heads and everyone that we work together with. I can't say how much I love Sutter County and have been so fortunate to work here. And I just feel it's a privilege to come to work every day and to do what I do on behalf of those constituents, and especially now to come up through the ranks and be honored as an, as elected official, to be able to do that and to continue to give back for the community. So everything I do, I do with love for the community and love for the citizens that we serve. So I recommend this for anybody who wants to come to work for Sutter County. It's, it's fantastic. And yeah, I'll be at it. Hopefully you'll, you'll see me at 40 years, so.
And we'd really, we'd really like to have you guys come up for the photo, yeah, so. This is, this goes down in the annals of history, right? Anals, annals, annals. Sorry, annals of history. Yeah, Mike liked the annals. It's all pronunciation. Johnston, Johnson. Thank you, guys. For the record, that was annals.
Will Major Julius Murphy please join the board up front for a presentation of a gold resolution for outstanding leadership in Sutter County region on behalf of the Salvation Army?
It's pretty awesome. Okay. And this one's awesome, too. So a resolution for Major Julius Murphy, the Yuba Sutter Corps Officer. Whereas Major Julius Murphy has provided excellent and impactful leadership in the Sutter County region on behalf of the Salvation Army for the last six and a half years. You know, you have like 29 to go to catch up with Donna, but I know that's not going to happen, but, okay. Whereas Major Murphy's spirit of collaboration and compassion have revitalized areas of our community in ways that positively changed the lives of thousands of individuals. And whereas Major Murphy completed his work with incredible dignity, seeing the value and the hope in those he served and among his colleagues. And whereas Major Murphy is a guide, a mentor, and a facilitator for all he worked with, always believing in hope of their recovery from homelessness. He is a staunch advocate and incredible leader, and his willingness to discuss innovative ideas and implement them through partnerships has changed the fabric of this community for the better. Major Murphy led the three-month-long pilot project of Pathways to Work, which was a collaboration between the City of Yuba City, the Downtown Business Association, and the County of Sutter to create new job opportunities for those struggling with homelessness, which was a resounding, resounding, sorry, success. I'm speaking funny today. And whereas Major Murphy understands and embodies the spirit of service to others, and we will miss him as he takes on his new role with the Salvation Army, serving Alameda County. So now therefore be it resolved that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations and sincere appreciation to Major Murphy and wish him the best of luck as he moves forward in your new role. We will always count you among our neighbors and friends, and we thank you for all that you've done, you've done on behalf of our community. Thank you, Major Murphy.
I, actually, my wife should be here with me. She's with my sons. They work at the Salvation Army Summer Camp in Nevada City. So, but we do it together. And we arrived in 2017. And when I found out I was coming to Yuba and Sutter County, so I was like, where is that? And I did some research of Yuba City and Sutter County, and I was still afraid. Because I, I grew up in Stockton, went to school in Fresno, recently served before coming here, Oceanside, California. So you know, you go from big city to small town, rural, right? And everybody knows everybody, and I've grown to become accustomed to that. And so it is a little frightening going back into the big city, right? Because I will get lost again. And so I want to thank you for your hospitality and welcoming my family. And it'd be, you know, your needs became our needs. And we, we, we took it on and found passion, particularly in solving homelessness. I think we're well on our way. And thank you to Sutter County, Yuba City, and also the Other Side of the River for, for joining the Salvation Army in that fight. We've been around for 138 years in this area, and we're not going anywhere. And so once again, I want to thank you. I want to thank my staff. I have Pep here, who's our Director of Operations, and I have some of my Depot staff. And Depot, a guy who's going to graduate, he doesn't look like he's graduating right now, but in about an hour, he'll be graduating from our program. So we, we praise God for the, for the team that we've assembled, and thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the, hey Pep? Can you come on up, Pep? And then also staff and your, your entourage here, have them come up for the photo. Please come on up. And then did you want to say a few words? Sounds like you wanted to say a few words, Supervisor. You're good? Okay, all right. No, Steve, do you want?
I just wanted to thank Major Murphy for his time here in Sutter County. Time well served. We're sad to see you move on, but we understand you have positive things to do in other communities and just appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Sorry, I took it from the board chair. Probably not a good move, right? But apologies, Chairman. Julius, I just want to let you know that I find you to be such a remarkable person. And I know that you have changed so many lives here. You have been an incredible partner to HHS. We will miss you greatly. We're going to keep in touch. I have your phone number. I'm coming to Alameda.
I just want to say I think we're going to miss him a lot during Thanksgiving. Because we're, we're going to try to pick up the pieces you left back there. So I really appreciate it. I got, got the opportunity to work this year with you. And I couldn't believe all the people that came through. And it was really, really nice to know. And this man right here is the one that had the whole show and made it happen. And I'll tell you, I don't know how many people were served, but they had trucks and vans going out with dinners. And the whole main hall at Yuba Sutter Fairgrounds was just entirely full. A free meal for Thanksgiving, and I want to say thank you. Not, not only from us board members, but you know, from the people here in our community. It means a lot to us. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And now we'll take a photo.
Will Scott Brooks, Ryan Hugh, and Robert Tan please join the board up front for a presentation of certificates of recognition for receiving the Sheriff's Office Employee of the Year Award?
Okay, it's our honor, this is a, regarding the 2024 Peace Officer of the Year Award. And it's our honor to present this to Scott and to Ryan. Sorry, Robert, sorry, Robert. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize Scott and Robert as the 2024 Peace Officers of the Year. And we thank you for your commitment to our community and to the positive impact you have made in our lives in Sutter County and for the residents of Sutter County. So I'll present this to you, Scott, and to Robert. And we thank you for all the service that you provide to our community. And like to hear you say a few words, actually. That's okay.
I prepared absolutely nothing. But it has been a joy, and it has been an eye-opener. And it's nice to have a place where, it's not always easy doing, you know, law enforcement work, but this community is very supportive of, I think, each of us. And it's very welcoming, and it makes it easier for us to do what we do.
I'm just going to echo what Robert said. This is a great community to work in. I love working here. I have no plans of going anywhere, and I appreciate the recognition for the work that we do. There's a lot of people that work for this department who put in a lot of work every day. And just a small token, but it is greatly appreciated.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Hey, could I have you guys come up here for a photo with us altogether? All you guys, Steve, come on. Come on, everybody up here, whole gang.
Okay, so I got handed the mic now, so you guys are all in big trouble. You know, I, I always say that I have the privilege of having my name over the door, and it, it is an absolute privilege, and I'm so blessed and thankful. But the reality is, it's, it's folks like Scott and Robert and so many others that go out and do the hard work and provide the services. I'm nothing without all of them, and just very thankful for them and so many others like them. And to the point, we do have a lot of support from our community. You don't get that everywhere, and that is a blessing. And I think one of the reasons we're allowed to thrive as a department. So thank you to all of our community as well.
Thank you, guys.
Will Cole Evans please join the board up front for a presentation of a service award in honor of 10 years of service with Sutter County?
You got a private, a little message there. But anyway, this is a certificate presented to Cole Evans as an expression of sincere appreciation for 10 years of loyal and faithful service to the citizens of the County of Sutter by the Board of Supervisors. May the coming years continue to bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and dedication to duty so richly deserve. Thank you. Give him a round of applause, guys.
Will Jeremy Jenkins please join the board up front for a presentation of a service award in honor of 10 years of service with Sutter County?
I'll read it to you. So, all right, this is another 10-year award for, this is for Jeremy Jenkins as an expression of sincere appreciation for 10 years of loyal and faithful service to the citizens of the County of Sutter by the Board of Supervisors. May the coming years continue to bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and dedication to duty so richly deserve. So this is for you, Jeremy. Congratulations. And you have a special note there from Sarah. You can read that on your own. And then please join us right here. Did you want to say anything?
Say a couple of words. 10 years go by, just say 10 years go by fast, right?
Yeah, I would say, just to be honest, I just want to say, Sutter County.
Yeah, I would say, just to be honest, I just want to say Sutter County has been a blessing for me. I have no family support here. So most of these, my coworkers and comrades and people I met over the years have become my family since I've been here at Sutter County. So just, you guys took a chance on a kid from Florida, and it turned out to be a great opportunity for me to succeed. And I've been able to grow from great leaders, from Ms. Susan, Rick. Rick was here when I was a kid, pretty much. Ms. Rhonda. But yeah, I've had a great opportunity to succeed here. And I just want to say thank you all for the great opportunity. And I'm very blessed. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Stand right here. Say for a photo. Okay, then we're done.
Thank you, guys.
Are we done? Okay, we move on to public comment. Members of the board will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides no discussion or any action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
We do. We have three public comments. The first one is Shandra Tucker.
Hi, Shandra. I know the feeling. Oh, please turn your microphone on. Yeah.
Hello?
There you go.
I got Invisalign too, so I may get a little slurry. Sorry. So I'd like to say good afternoon. My name is Shandra Tucker, and I'm an Intervig Councilor II with Sutter County Behavioral Health. I've been employed with the county for over 22 years. And since January of this year, I have been serving as the Union President for Sutter County Employees Association. Ask Me, Council 57, and I'm also a member of the negotiations team. Prior to that, I've been the Union Vice President for over about eight years. As you're aware, the Union has actively supported County Measure D and City Measure A. We fully recognize the county currently has a budget issue, and we understand funds will be tight in the next few years. So I would like to say thank you for putting some money on the table. However, we still need a little bit more help with health care. I'm here today to urge you to take a look at our health care rates and contributions. According to data reviewed with HR, next year's insurance rates will increase 21.9%. Currently, there's a 50-50 split on those health care increases. The Union is proposing an 80-20 split with the county to help with those increases. We urge you to review and consider this proposal. At the current 50-50 split, it will be financially devastating to many members on the non-high deductible plan. And in the future, if continued at this 50-50 split, it will impact our members with the high deductible plans as well. We believe the county is better equipped to absorb these health care cost increases than our members, many of whom are currently struggling to make ends meet. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Tina Hessong.
Good afternoon. I would like to invite everyone to join us for the New California State 13th Constitutional Convention in Visalia this coming week, on Monday, June 30th, and Tuesday, July 1st. You can get tickets by going to Events tab on the newcaliforniestate.com website. We have a great list of speakers. Joe Hoff from the Gateway Pundit, Dave Hodges of the Common Sense Show, Joe Vila will sing the National Anthem, and President Trump, Attorney General Bondi, FBI Director Patel, and FBI Deputy Bongino have all been invited, and they have not declined. I encourage you to be part of this historical event as we, the people, follow the Constitution to make change. So remember, go to newcaliforniestate.com/events to get your ticket. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our last public speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, North East City. Thank you, the funny, baddest sheriff ever. Sheriff Department, like football game. We went to all football games for Sheriff Department. Six sheriffs with all the football games, law enforcement, first responders. Colonel Scott. Scott, Colonel Scott, Colonel Scott sends Marine Corps to Los Angeles. Mutual aid, Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles Fire Department, Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, and Gab News and Karen Bass. Thank you, Colonel Scott, for Marine Corps, mutual aid, LAPD, FD, Sheriff Department, and LA Government. Thank you. And thank you, and thank you, Zach Hamper, Mutual Aid, LA Fire, LA Fires. Thank you for mutual aid, also Sacramento Fire, too. Thank you, Jeff Boone, the good Boone. Carm Baines. What's up, Carm Baines? They Carm Baines, the best supervisor diversity ever. And Dan Flores, Sir Darth Vader. I am your father. Yes. And Jeff Stevens, the pumpkin pie, next birthday, man, pumpkin pie. And Mike Ziegemeyer, my honkers versus our Huskies. UC honkers. UC honkers, man. UC honkers. And thank you, Sarah Arrio, Sarah of SoCal, Sarah. So California Sarah. And thank you, Dr. Liu. And also thank you, and also thank you, T. Hassel. And thank you, Laura, the Libertarian. Thank you, Veronica, Katie Gissin. Thank you, Nick Neil. Thank you, all, thank you for serving for everybody. And thank you, and thank you, Colonel Scott, Mutual Aid, LAPD, Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Any further speakers? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on now to the consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to staff, and that require only routine action by the board. The Chair will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option, or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. With that, I'll call for motion. To the Chair? Yes. Move to approve the consent calendar. Okay, first, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Stevens. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, the ayes have it. Consent calendar carries. At this point, we're going to adjourn the Sutter County Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Water Works District One meeting. We'll let the roll call stand, Madam Clerk, and we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Then I'll actually move on to the consent calendar. Move to approve. Okay, have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent passes. Thank you very much. Any other business from the board at this point? None? Okay. And there's no closed session. We're going to adjourn the Water Works District Number One meeting and then go to the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority meeting. We'll call that to order. And we'll go ahead with the roll call on this one.
Director Boone?
Present.
Director Flores?
Present.
Director Ziegemeyer? Director Baines?
Present.
Director Stevens?
Okay, thank you for the roll call, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to consent. Move to approve. Okay, we have first by Supervisor Baines.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Boone. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Consent carries. There being no other business of the Board of Directors, we'll move to adjourn the Supportive Services Public Authority meeting. And then we'll move back to the Board of Supervisors meeting to appearance items. And we'll hear from Sutter County CAO Steve Smith.
Approval of Amendment Number Seven to the amended and restated Joint Exercise of Power of Agreement for Pioneer Community Energy, the admission of Sutter County as a voting member, and authorization for the Chair to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. This one is pretty short. Over the past, let's see, two years, well, year and a half, your board has approved several steps along the way for Sutter County to become part of a CCA. The, for what we hope are, you know, it's a, sorry, Community Choice Aggregation Program, so that the county and all residents within in this, in this particular agreement, Uba City and Live Oak aren't included. They'll have their own separate agreements. But everyone in the county will be eligible and become part of the Community Choice Aggregation and that is Pioneer Community Energy. So the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, approved the addition of several cities and counties. But suffice it to say, this just deals with Sutter County. And in March of this year, this was submitted to the CPUC, and on June 9th, it was approved. So this is just another restatement of our intent to move forward and becoming members of the CCA. And just need your vote of approval for this amendment of the JPA, where we will have a voting member on the board.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any public comment? Okay, there being none, and I entertain a motion. Yes. Move to approve staff's recommendation. Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Stevens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, actually, I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this one, so we could...
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Move on to item number 21. Again, CAO Steve Smith.
Consideration and Approval of an Agreement Between the County of Sutter and Lennar Homes of California LLC Regarding Advanced Funding, Fee Credit, and Reimbursement For Certain Urban Services to Be Provided to Lakeside at Sutter Point.
Yes, thank you. So this item is one of probably several that will be coming to your board over the next year or so as the progress of Sutter Point continues, which is a great thing. If anyone's driven down Riego Road recently, you'll see the improvements that have been made, streets being paved, the infrastructure going in. So as part of that, there are agreements to provide phasing in of staffing as we move forward. And this first, I see as a real win-win for a few reasons, which I'll get to. But this would be an agreement to fund the salaries of six fire personnel at just over $900,000. One deputy sheriff position at about $257,000, and one sheriff patrol vehicle at $191,000. Those vehicles include computer build-out and other equipment. That's why it does sound very expensive for a vehicle. But for a total of about $1,003,000, almost $1,004,000. And fortunately, with this agreement, and we have representatives from the developers here, the timing worked well in that folks may be aware of the county fire department funding challenges. And when I mention a win-win, one, we have employees that we've given notices to. They're limited-term employees, so maybe they aren't technically layoffs, but to the employees, they're a layoff. And this is something that with this funding, those employees would stay on. But also, it saves the developers some money versus hiring people off the street and going through those processes. So it's a real win-win. It's very timely. I can get into the fire issues separately or during the budget, if you'd like. But this is kind of a reprieve for those employees, which is excellent. And the fact that it'll save the developers money as well. And then the deputy sheriff position, and we'll be coming back as things progress for requests for additional positions. But for now, I just wanted the board to be aware of the impact of this. Again, I think it's very positive. And we'll be coming back to your board over the next many months with additional updates and agreements as those get resolved.
Sorry, thank you, Steve. Are there any public comments regarding this matter?
Yes, we have one public comment from George Carpenter.
Great, welcome, George.
Members of the board, my name is George Carpenter with Wind Communities. I'm one of the developers of the Lakeside project with Lennar. And I just want to thank Steve and Bill for their attention to this and getting it to the board and on the agenda. We do agree this is a win-win. And we do have a number of agreements that are going to be coming to the board over the next couple of months for funding, additional funding for more deputy positions, firefighter positions, additional parks, and other improvements that we're going to be building down there. And so, you know, look forward to being back in front of you quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. To the Chair? Yes, Supervisor Baines? I move to approve. Okay, move motion by Supervisor Baines.
To the Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to also just say thank you to Wind Industries and George for all their hard work putting this agreement together, and Steve, and Bill, the county, for all their hard work. This really helps as far as the fire positions out in my area and Mike's area to keep the funding for the fire departments going for a while. We are going to need to look into how we're going to solve it permanently. But it's very important to keep those fire stations open and everything as long as we can. So thank you.
Any other comments by the board? If not, I'll entertain a second to the motion. Okay, we have a second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. We'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Tentative Approval of the Sutter County Fiscal Year 2025-26 Recommended Budget at $518,257,211, and Approval of the Related Actions.
Hello, good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board Members. So here we go. I'm here to present to you the tentative approval for the Fiscal Year 25-26 Recommended Budget. And as you know, we've come before you several times. Just recently, we came before you on June 10th to really outline in detail the recommended budget before you today. And today, we're considering a tentative approval. And what that means is that effective July 1, this approval will allow us to continue operations until budget is adopted in September. In the staff report, you'll see that there are five different attachments. The first attachment is Attachment A, and it's the website link to find the detail of the recommended budget for anybody in the public or yourselves. I know you all got that great big binder. And so that's a great resource for information for members of the public. We also have a hard copy available at the Sutter County Library or at the County Administrator's Office. Attachment B, and I don't expect you to be able to read this very, very, very fine print, but the total capital assets included in the recommended budget are $4,944,393. And you can see it's split up between total equipment, total vehicles, and total software. We wanted to outline all the different items that we intend to purchase in this recommended budget. And we'd like this tentative approval to be, like I mentioned, effective July 1, so we can start the purchase on these items, especially the vehicles, because General Services has a difficult time... has a difficult time trying to get these purchases timely. And if the sooner we can start, the better chance we have of getting these vehicles purchased. So, it really helps to support them. Attachment C has all of the capital projects that we have included in the recommended budget for a total of $4,797,373. You can see that it's split between total structures and improvements and total infrastructure, and these are primarily road projects, but definitely some HHS social services projects as well. Attachment D includes all of the net position changes. So, when we came before you on June 10th, we just told you there was a net change of five different positions. In this Attachment D, it outlines all the different positions. We'd like to call specifically the DA position, where we're removing a district attorney, flex 1, 3, DDA position, to add a senior criminal investigator position. When the next investigator position opens up, the DA will ask to delete that to add back the DDA position. So, we just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing on that one, so she can have her investigator support that she needs. And then Attachment E is all the general fund operating transfers. We're asking that you, again, make the approval for us to be able to transfer in July and August, the transfers that we use for health, welfare, trial court, and public safety, so that they can continue their operating expenses until the budget is finally adopted in September. Are there any questions or discussion on the recommended budget?
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, any comments from the public?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to thank staff for sitting down with all of us and really helping us out with this. You know, every year, you make the time and effort, and we really appreciate you for doing this. Makes it a lot easier to get through this every year.
To the, to the chair, if I may, quickly.
Yeah.
And as Supervisor Ziegemeyer, Vice Chair Ziegemeyer mentioned, we'll do the same for the public, and you've mentioned that before. Happy if, sometimes you'll have a hard time getting us to shut up talking about the budget, because we've put so much time into it. So, I know there's a lot of detail, and you'll see every item project is lined out, and we're happy to discuss all of those recommendations with anyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to just echo the thank yous as well, because I do want to mention that this is an extensive budget and a lot of work, and you put a lot of time into it. And here's the binder she was referring to. It's huge. Take a look. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot to it. But the great part for us, because I've been in multiple organizations involved in other organizations, and sometimes you get to the budget time, and it becomes a really, I want to say like hairy deal. Like, it's like, it becomes contentious, and there's a lot of questions and things. But, but this staff has provided this board so much detail from the beginning and kept it transparent all the way through, that you can see the process just kind of moves along slowly. I mean, a lot of people say, hey, the, I mean, slowly, it moves along quickly and efficiently. And the thing is, you can see that what's going on in the budget from the beginning all the way through. And so, this is what you're witnessing. Otherwise, you'd have these contentious, you know, conversations with departments as we go through. There's no need for those, because we've already gone through all of it. So, just kudos on a good job, and we're looking forward to getting to the final stages, passing it, but I'm sure we'll be happy to tentatively pass today. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have first and the second. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The tentative budget passes. Thank you, Laura, for the report. And now we'll go to follow-up reports and announcements. Steve, do you have any reports?
Just briefly, I had the pleasure on the, I think it was the 11th, to attend the California State Sheriff's Association meeting, where Sutter County Sheriff Brandon Barnes was sworn in as president. And it was the color. Yeah, the, the, is it the honor guard? Or is it the, yeah, the Sutter County honor guard were there, and a few employees, and he gave a great speech, and I know he'll represent the association and the county well, and he's already been, what, down at the Capitol, speaking on Prop 36, funding with Sheriff Cooper from Sacramento and others. So, anyways, just wanted to say congratulations. And then also, our auditor controller, Nate Black, I don't think he's here at the moment, but he was also made president. I'm sorry, I don't have the initials of the state auditors organization, but he was also made president. So, once again, from Donna, who, we heard all of hers, to Lisa, who's, are you immediate past president now of Kakasa?
One removed, but recently president. I may be missing someone, but we've had so much leadership out of a small county, small rural county, so it just reflects how great some of the employees are that we have, or I'll say all of the employees we have. Thank you.
Thank you, CAO Steve. And I do want to say congratulations, Sheriff, on your new appointment. I think that's great. And, you know, it's great, you mentioned the leadership demonstrated from this small county, right? There's 58 counties in California, and the leadership roles that our people have played are on top a lot, so it's great. Let's go to Supervisor comments. Supervisor Boone, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to start off by thanking Bill, our counsel over there, Bill Vanasak. He's put a lot of hours in working on that Sutter Point for all those developers and trying to get that money up for all of us, and I thank you, because a lot of people don't know, because you're hiding over in the corner, and nobody ever really gets a chance to see you. Except for me, I kind of like to knock on your door quite often, probably more than you'd like to have, but, but I really appreciate your time and efforts in making that happen, so we can keep our fire department rolling. That's really key, right? Key position right now. And secondly, Steve, while you're there, I know we've been working on a grant for the Robbins Wastewater Treatment Facility. I wonder where we're at on that, if you have kind of an update?
I believe we're still waiting to hear on that one. I know, so last year, Senator Padilla put forth that grant. If you're, are you talking on the pumping, the big $400,000 one, or the smaller?
No, just the $5 million wastewater treatment facility in Robbins, not the.
Oh, I think.
The one we're working on with USDA.
Yeah, I don't think we have.
I think we're in engineering or something, was the last, I heard.
Oh, in the community to verify. Okay, so those USDA grants, or a lot of the federal grants, are only eligible in communities that are considered disadvantaged, disadvantaged, which has to do with demographics of salary. So, if all the demographics aren't available, or if it's very close to meeting that, which Robbins is, they're slightly over the, I guess, recommended level, then we will go out and have salary surveys done that we hope people respond to, because that will verify if the community is eligible for those grants.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Neil, I appreciate you too. I know you've got, doing the job of about five men over there at the Development Services, and I really appreciate your time and efforts.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Baines?
I'll move to report.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
I want to thank everyone that was involved with Yuba Sutter Fair this past weekend. It was amazing success. Thank you, Supervisor Baines, who sits on the board, Dave Dilaboo, the CEO. It was awesome. It was great if you made it to Saturday. This was my first year as a welding leader, and the kids did so good. One of our own kids in our Sutter Buttes 4-H Club actually won best to show in all first places. I said, you kids set the bar too high your first year. Said, couldn't have shot for a second or a third place, so we can up it up every year. But it was amazing. The buyers, the community members that go out there. It was just a great fair, and the weather. The weather was perfect. So, that was awesome. One thing that I ask is, I asked that, Steve, that we work on a letter to Cal Fire or PG&E. This past weekend, we had quite a few areas around the Buttes had the potential to have their power shut off because of the Buttes being placed in 2024 in a high-prone fire area due to electrical fires. But everything that I've looked up and the research that I've done, the Buttes have never had issues with fires due to electrical power lines. So, with that being said, where are they getting their research at? Because you can imagine the calls that the fire department received, the supervisors received, and it's just, a lot of people are worried out there, especially those that live in the rural areas, that rely on whether it be an oxygen feature of something that needs power, and they don't have a generator or some sort of backup. But I just don't see how it's fair that they could come in and have the possibility to shut our power off, because we're not, from what I've seen, from what I've asked, in any sort of, how do you say, prone fire, prone to some sort of fires due to high winds and electrical. So, we should work on some sort of letter, ask them where they're getting the research and why they're doing this, because people are very upset in our area, and they shouldn't have the power to set the rules in our area for something that is just not true. Or maybe if it is true, they could show us the proof that there are fires happening due to electrical power lines.
If I, if I may, we have a PG&E representative. We could reach out and at least just set up a call or Facebook, or Facebook, FaceTime, Zoom, whatever it is, Teams, to discuss with them, and we could see what the policy is. And then, I know Zach did a lot of work, Zach Hamel, Emergency Manager, Director of Operations, Director of Emergency Operations, and got it on Facebook, on the county's Facebook, and on the Emergency Services Facebook page. And I know they typically provide an area where you can go and plug things in if you need to, and charging and all that. I know we've done that in the past. I don't know the details of all of it this time, but we can always set up a call and just see what the policy is, and go from there.
All right, through the chair. So, I'm glad you brought up Zach. Zach, thank you. Zach and I were in communication probably up to about 9:00, 9:30 at night, Saturday and Sunday. He was a big help, helped walk me through this. But like I said, there's just, there's no reason that I can see that we are set in that, and that they have those rules on us, on the Sutter Buttes.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Stevens. Yes, sir.
Okay, first, being a new supervisor, I just want to say thank you to the staff and Steve for working so hard on the budget. You know, me coming in, I never realized how much work and how big the budgets were and everything else, so I just want to say thank you for all the hard work, and especially to the staff. There's a lot of hours involved that a lot of people don't see, so I really appreciate that, and I know all of us supervisors do. We saw a group of individuals come in here earlier, and it's tough making those hard decisions where, when we don't have much money coming in, and we have to decide where these cuts are gonna be made, and employees, we want to give everybody as much as we can, but it's hard to say no sometimes. It's really hard. So, I know they're having to make those kinds of decisions, so I really appreciate the time and effort that they put into making those decisions. And then, another thing I want to do is request a couple plaques. First, Habitat for Humanity and Revive Church, with the help of the Twin Cities Rescue Mission, provided the labor to install insulation and OSB boards to better insulate the Better Way tough sheds, with 14 of the 20 units completed so far. The additional installation has helped tremendously with keeping the unit's temperature stable and not overtaxing the heat in the air conditioning units. I've been in those little sheds, and with no installations in the middle of July and August, it's really hot, and to have them come in and do the installation was such an improvement for the people who have to stay in there. Another plaque, Salav Volunteers installed a beautiful walkway. That was, those aren't my words, but Salav installed a beautiful walkway at Better Way with significantly help of our mobility challenge participants negotiate the walkway, which was previously gravelled and pitted and very difficult to navigate for those using the walkway walkers and wheelchairs. And then, request a certificate of appreciations to member of the Yuba Sutter Youth Homeless Advisory Board, who will be giving a presentation to the board in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stevens. I'd like to close in memory, first of all, I don't, well, I guess I'd like to extend a sincere condolences to our own Sarah here. So, we're gonna like to close in memory of her father, Seth Eberhart, and he was 92, an extended relative of Yuba City. Seth was a Marine, a Korean War Vet, and a beloved father of five, including our own Sarah Eberhart-Rios. So, he will be greatly missed. I'd like to close in his memory. And I'd also like to close in memory of Terry Brown. For those who don't know him, Terry Brown was a longtime owner of A1 Window Washing, but he was a previous firefighter for Yuba City Fire Department, and he's a lifelong resident of Yuba City. He's also Councilman Mark Boomgarden's cousin. So, I'd like to close in their memory, please. And then, as far as announcements, we have the big 4th of July Bi-County Firework Show happening in Marysville, but you can see it from both sides of the river, and it's going to be obviously on the 4th of July. And I understand the fireworks go off about 9:30 PM, so you'll want to be out there. It's gonna be a spectacular show, from what I've been hearing. So, look forward to seeing you guys out there. And other than that, we have no further announcements. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion to close the meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Close session.
Closed session is conference with labor negotiator Veronica Baumgartner, Sutter County General Supervisory Management Confidential and Professional Bargaining Units, Sutter County Professional Firefighters Association, Sutter County Probation Officers Association, and Sutter County Peace Officers Association pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6.